Okay. I will go ahead and call to order this meeting of the Missoula Board of County Commissioners. It's Thursday, March 14th, and we will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Are there any public announcements? Yeah, anything? Okay. Is there any public comment on items not on today's agenda? All right. Seeing none, our current claims list includes claims received as of February 22nd to March 4th by the Commissioner's Office, and it totals $1,253,766.58. And as always, you can go online to our Agenda and Minutes portal and look at all the claims that add up to that total amount. We have a couple of hearings today. We'll begin with the Spurgeon Ranch subdivision extension, and I will open that hearing with the staff report.
Casey Drayton, Planner with Community and Planning Services, here to present the Spurgeon Ranch subdivision preliminary plat extension request. This project is represented by Territorial Land Works. We have Paul Forsting here with us today representing the project. In case anyone's unfamiliar, the Spurgeon Ranch subdivision is out in the Target Range Orchard Homes neighborhood, out to the west of Missoula, as shown on the map, highlighted in blue where the cursor is pointing currently. The property is about 20 acres in size, currently vacant. This is the aerial to show you what it would look like today, again, in case anyone's unfamiliar. The preliminary plat that was approved for the subdivision back on May 11th of 2017 is shown here on the screen. Keep in mind, this is rotated 90 degrees counterclockwise, so north would be off to the left-hand side of the screen. We are between Spurgeon Road and Mount Avenue. It was a 19-lot subdivision with an agricultural and utility lot, which would be shown across the top of the screen that you can see here in front of us. As mentioned, this was originally approved by the Board of County Commissioners at the public hearing on May 11th, 2017, subject to 26 conditions of approval, with a final plat submitted deadline of May 11th, 2020. The request in front of us today is to extend that final plat submitted deadline by three years to 2023. That request would be reviewed in accordance with subdivision regulations, Section 5.7.15, and I have the review criteria here on the screen for you today. We're basically looking at changed circumstances, so anything affecting the timing of submission of the final plat, and the applicant is probably your best source of information in terms of any changed circumstances that may be out there. This is primarily relating to meeting the conditions of approval, as well as some sanitation approvals, is the basis of the request. The subdivider feels that they can meet the new deadlines. All aspects of the original decision will remain unchanged, including the findings of fact, conclusions of law, and conditions of the original approval. There's no changes to the general area of the subdivision. The property lines remain the same, and this particular project wasn't part of some master plan of facilities that we're going to be extending through it, so it's not affecting any downstream users or anything like that. So staff has recommended that the filing deadline for the subdivision be extended by three years to May 11th, 2023, and I'm happy to take any questions you may have on this. Thank you.
Thanks. Questions for Casey?
So why couldn't the developer get this done on time?
What we're looking at in those 26 conditions of approval are some very difficult conditions to meet. I think that'd probably be the biggest bulk of it, as well as sanitation approval. They're proposing individual systems for the lots, which are difficult to achieve from the comments that came in from the Health Department. I'm not an expert in that field, but that's the word I'm getting. And Paul would probably be happy to share more as to where they're at exactly in the sanitation review process, but in terms of the conditions, I've included those with the staff report for you, the original conditions of the subdivision approval. You'll find some pretty unique conditions in there relating to agricultural mitigation, as well as some pedestrian facilities. The applicant has shown that they're currently working on it. We do have a meeting scheduled with them with a few different county departments, including Parks, Trails, Open Lands, and Public Works, next week, I believe it is, to start talking through some of this. We haven't had a whole lot of communication on the subdivision up until now, but they are showing that they're at least moving forward now, starting on to show us that they're going to be able to meet those conditions of approval.
So I remember seeing this when I was on Planning Board a while ago, and if I remember right, there was a community drain field and then a replacement community drain field?
There may be. Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, I misspoke. It must be a community system.
Now you're saying individual systems? So was there a, that's a pretty substantial change?
I'm sorry, that's not a correct change. I misspoke on that front. Community system, it sounds like Paul is acknowledging back there, yeah.
And it may be helpful to hear from the applicant or the applicant's representative if they had something to say, so maybe they could address some of the questions as well.
Paul Forsting, Territorial Land Works. Yeah, there's been no change to the sewer system. It's still a community system. We've been working with the DEQ on that, getting that permitted, and it's been going well. We're just taking some time. We've been giving them additional monitoring and whatnot. We've been working with Public Works on the road design, and then we've got a meeting next week to talk about the parks and trails aspects of the project. Commissioners, you may remember, we had, we extended the trail over through the aglot, and there's some agreements with that complicated, I guess somewhat complicated agreements with how cash and loo is going to be achieved, how we're going to give some of that parkland, how we're going to, how we're going to cross the irrigation ditch. I've been working with the irrigation ditch company on how we're going to make that crossing, and if it's going to be public or privately maintained, all that stuff. All that stuff we're meeting with the County Parks Department on next week, and Casey at CAPS. We've been working towards the 26 conditions of approval. It takes a lot of time. There, we have a saying in our office that it's, the last 20% takes 80% of the effort. It's, we're confident that we're going to be, have a lot done this next year, and what we're asking the extension for is to make sure that as we get closer to the deadline, we're not, we're giving everybody enough time to be as thoughtful and mindful with how we address these conditions as possible. We're, we've got a lot of work done, and we've still got a lot of work to do, but we're, we're confident that we'll be, I think we'll be close, closer to a year than three years out, but we just wanted to be safe and mindful about what we have left to do, so, thank you.
Did you say the, there's going to be a trail crossing through the aglot?
Yep, absolutely. Yeah, that was a, that was a condition that we, that is not something we had proposed initially, but the Parks Department and working with the Commissioners, that was a condition that was asked. And so I could show it to you if we had the extension there, but where, yeah, there's a, there's a trail connecting Spurgeon to Mount. We had a, it wasn't a strict requirement of the regulations. It was an addition based on mitigation that the Parks Department wanted us to add, yeah.
Just, I mean, I realize it's way too late for any design changes, but as a person who has a farm in my family, I would not want the public walking through our farm field. They're going to step in the wrong places, pull things they shouldn't pull, and mess with really expensive equipment. I feel like it's a poor design idea if you actually were sincere in your desire that this would be a functional agricultural lot.
It's, well, and we didn't propose it, and I think we actually, if you were back in the situation we were, we somewhat fought against it, thinking about the aglot and thinking about how we're going to use it, and it's additional infrastructure that we didn't think was necessary, but at the end of the day, we agreed to it because we were convinced that it will be nice to have a connection from Spurgeon and Mount. We have a trail system internal on, on the Spurgeon side, and so I could, I think it will be a nice trail once it's, once it's done. I think it'll be highly used for kids getting to the Target Range School from kind of that area in Spurgeon, which it's, it'll, it'll be a nice little shortcut for folks, so.
Through someone's farm field?
Through, if we had a picture of it, you'd see that it kind of hugs the fence, and I think it's a...
It's not through the middle of a farm field.
Yeah, yep, absolutely. Yep, thanks, Commissioner. Although I don't have a pointer with me, you could, if we look at the aglot there, maybe, Casey, do you have the, maybe you could point it out for me where that trail's going to go, if you remember? Uh, yeah, maybe I'll just show. So, let's see what I can do here. All right, and so we have a, we are required to have a trail internal here. What we were requested to do is put that trail along the side here, and we're going to cross right here and make our way to Mount. So if you can see that little pointer, which I know is difficult, that's the general location of where the trail will go. And again, it's not something we had initially proposed, but it is something we agreed to do. And so we're working on making sure that the, the agreement we have for that trail is coming together, and we're meeting next week to formalize that.
A question for either Casey or John Hart. So just to be clear, is it correct to say this is not an opportunity at this juncture to modify or amend any of the conditions of approval or the preliminary plat?
That would be correct.
Okay, thanks.
Any further questions for Casey or Paul?
Maybe this might be a question for Casey or Chet. The person who buys the aglot, can they fence the trail off from their property?
It may be a possibility. I couldn't say right offhand. I assume a fence would be acceptable. I don't think it would violate the condition in any form. I'd have to look a little more into it, though, to make sure that there wasn't discussion of that initially or something.
Do you remember any discussion of that?
We didn't discuss it, and as long as park, the Parks Department was fine, we have to give a 20-foot easement, and so presuming that it was outside of that, that 20-foot corridor, yeah, I don't, I don't see there'd be any, the intent of the aglot was that somebody could buy it and farm it, and so, yeah, fencing off the trail, that would make sense, yeah.
A 20-foot wide path?
Easement for the path. So, so that's, it wouldn't be able to, there's going to be an eight-foot path, and then it has to be within a 20-foot easement, and so where that fence lied would be 20 feet, yeah.
Any more questions? Okay. Is there any public comment on the Spurgeon Ranch extension? All right, seeing none, I will close the hearing.
Well, suffice it to say, I'm no fan of the subdivision, and indeed, I did vote against it when we took this up a little over a year ago, but having said that, this extension request is in keeping with many of the other extensions that we've granted, so I'll go ahead and make the motion that the filing deadline for the Spurgeon Ranch subdivision be extended by three years from May 11th, 2020 to May 11th, 2023, based on the staff report and public testimony.
I'll second that. Further discussion?
I voted against this on Planning Board, and I understand there are no possible way at this point to change the design, so we have, I feel like have no choice here.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Next up, we have a hearing for the Climate Action Resolution, which I'll open with a staff report.
Thanks. Good afternoon, Commissioners. For the record, my name is Diana Manetta. I am Energy Conservation and Sustainability Coordinator in Community and Planning Services. I am excited to be here today to present to you a proposed Climate Action Resolution. Before I go any farther, I'd like to recognize Elliot Thompson, back there, who is the Energy Corps AmeriCorps member serving with the county, who's making a major contribution to our sustainability program and to this Climate Action Resolution in particular. So, jumping in here. The science is clear. The climate is changing, and human activities are the primary contributor to that change. In Missoula County, climate change projections, some of which we are experiencing already, include hotter and drier summers, warmer and wetter springs, and more frequent and intense wildfires and floods following from those conditions. We can expect that the conditions that led to our 2017 fire season and our 2018 flood season will unfortunately be increasingly common in the coming decades. The county has recognized the urgency of this problem, and in the county's 2016 growth policy, it includes Goal Number Four, which reads, "Reduce Missoula County's contribution to climate change while promoting resiliency and adapting to its impact on the natural environment and communities." I think of this goal in two parts. The first is about reducing our contribution to climate change, and the second is about resiliency and adaptation. You know, with regard to that second part, we have already started a climate resiliency planning process in partnership with the city and Climate Smart Missoula, and that involves delving deeply into locally specific climate projections for our county, and then working with stakeholders to evaluate what those changes mean for all sectors of our community and our county, our public health, our forests and rivers, our built environment, our economy, and many others. But as we work through this process, it's increasingly clear that resiliency, while it's crucial, isn't enough. The climate projections change depending on what assumptions you make about how rapidly global greenhouse gas emissions will be reduced in the coming decades. In the business-as-usual case, where we assume that those emissions continue to increase on the path they've been on, we're looking at conditions in the future that will be very, very difficult for us to adapt to in Missoula County. The faster that you assume those emissions come down, the less dire those projections look, and the more manageable the task of adapting will be. So, in addition to resiliency planning, we believe that Missoula County can also do our part and join the global effort to reduce greenhouse gas emissions. That's getting back to that first part of Goal Number Four, which is reducing our contribution to climate change. To that end, in 2017, the county completed its first greenhouse gas inventory of county government operations. This is a major undertaking that involves gathering energy use information for all the county buildings and facilities, and there are a lot of them, fuel use information for county vehicles, information from the county's water and wastewater treatment plants, and, as well as information and estimates about employee commute behavior from surveys of employees. And I also want to recognize Erica Barnett, who happens to be here today. She was the first Energy Corps AmeriCorps member who served with the county prior to Elliot and prior to my position as well, and she completed this greenhouse gas inventory. The results of the inventory indicate that in that year, 2016, the county emitted 7,583 metric tons of carbon dioxide equivalent. Now, building from that inventory, today we are proposing for your consideration a Climate Action Resolution that would set a goal of carbon neutrality in county government operations by 2035, with an interim goal of a 30% reduction in greenhouse gas emissions from 2016 levels by 2025. The resolution would also direct the formation of a Climate Action Team made up of county staff to create a Climate Action Plan to achieve these goals. To visualize the goals graphically, the red line here shows what we'd expect our emissions to do in the absence of a concerted effort to reduce them. That is, we'd expect them to creep up gradually over time, as they have done in the past. The green line illustrates the trajectory required to achieve our targets. If we successfully follow that green trajectory rather than the red one, we would avoid releasing about 80,000 metric tons of carbon dioxide equivalent into the atmosphere between now and 2035, and that's equivalent to taking more than 17,000 cars off the road for a year. So it's really a significant impact. But we believe that more than that, it's, it would be the county government leading by example. We'll also be working on initiatives to address climate change throughout the community and throughout the county, beyond government operations. And as we ask the community increasingly to be involved in these efforts, we believe it's important for our local government to lead by example. This might seem like an ambitious goal, and it is, but one could say that ambition is appropriate, given the magnitude of the climate challenge confronting us. And Missoula County wouldn't be alone in this. Dozens of other local governments around the country have set ambitious climate goals and are working hard to achieve them. There's a lot we can learn from them. We don't have to figure this all out on our own. Before I close my remarks here, I want to let you know that we have received 35 written comments on the proposed Climate Action Resolution. Of those, 34 were in support of the resolution and encouraged the commission to adopt it. And based on public comments received, I do have one staff recommendation for a slight edit to the resolution, and I'm going to share that with the Commissioners, and it's very brief, so I'll just share it with the public verbally here. In the second whereas statement, near the end of the second whereas statement, the line is, "will result in massive impacts on ecosystems, human health, and well-being." And we're recommending to add the words "economic" and "social" before the word "well-being," so that it would read, "will result in massive impacts on ecosystems, human health, and economic and social well-being." That was a suggestion we received in a comment from the public, and we felt like it was really valuable there to spell out, you know, that was the intention of that, of the word "well-being" there, but just spelling that out a little bit better. We appreciated that suggestion, so our recommendation would be adopting the resolution with those three words there added. And with that, I will close my staff report.
Thanks, Jessica. Do we have any questions for Diana? Okay. Is there any public comment on the Climate Action Resolution?
See, well, that's complicated. My name is Gary Mattson. I live in West Riverside, which is a suburb of Milltown, and I want to thank you for this opportunity to comment. I strongly support both the interim and long-term goals aimed at reaching carbon neutrality in Missoula County. Our most important legacy is to care for the natural systems that enable health and quality in human life. The county's carbon goals would recognize the critical role of science in our society, that of establishing evidence-based truth. It is unfortunate and potentially tragic that so many of our leaders in government and business ignore the overwhelming scientific consensus that human activity releasing greenhouse gases is causing changes in climate that are increasing, increasingly catastrophic. We depend upon strong government leadership at every level to establish policies that will turn the trend around, reducing greenhouse, greenhouse gas production and restoring the balance among natural and environmental systems. Activities such as cryptocurrency mining that squander huge amounts of valuable energy resources for the financial benefit of a few persons should be ended. The advertised future benefits of blockchain technology are, in my opinion, only a smokescreen to give mining a positive image. Technology should be permitted to move forward only when carbon-free renewable energy resources have largely replaced fossil fuel energy generation. I thank Diana Manetta and Jenny Dixon for their help in identifying measures that can be effective in limiting the degradation caused by an out-of-balance production of greenhouse gases, and I thank the Commissioners for giving attention to these issues. Thank you.
My name is Robyn Saha. I live in Missoula, and I'm here to encourage your support for the resolution before you. I served on the county's technical advisory group that supported the development of the greenhouse gas inventory for the county, and believe this is an important and natural next step that the county is taking. It follows suit with what the city has done and with what other communities around Montana have done, including our tribal communities, and not only by, is it an example of leading by example, but it, I think, is an obligation for the county and for all of our local governments to be good global citizens, just as we would not say, well, if someone else is littering, it's okay for me to litter. We, we, we need to do the right thing regardless of what other people are doing. And we might hear arguments, too, that, well, the county's greenhouse gas, greenhouse gas, or the carbon footprint is not very big. Well, it, it does require addressing this global problem. The communities around the world take steps, and they certainly are, and Missoula County has a great opportunity here. The, the city itself, the university, which I am a part of, have also taken similar steps and have shown it's feasible to reduce emissions, so this is not just pie in the sky, and that I believe with technology and all the other opportunities, that these goals will be achievable. It'll take hard work, but they'll take commitment, and your support is an important step towards achieving those goals. And just want to thank Diana and the rest of the team, too, that's been involved, I think, for all of us in the community wanting to see progress on this issue. Thank you.
My name's Steve Loken. I have a construction company in Missoula called Loken Builders, dedicated the last 40 years of my construction career to doing energy conservation, historic retrofits on existing housing stock in Missoula. Also worked for the Bonneville Power Administration and trained 12,000 engineers, architects, and builders across the Pacific Northwest to come in line with the Pacific Power Planning Council's recommendations to endorse and implement conservation in buildings across the Pacific Northwest. And according to their last power plan, the Pacific Power Planning Council in Portland, Oregon, said that they could meet almost 100% of projected growth in this region with conservation endeavors in the built environment. That's huge. Two things is, it lets you know that there's a lot of low-hanging fruit if they can meet the projected energy consumption requirements by conservation, but number two, the fact that it's the lowest-cost way of producing energy is by saving it so that other people can use it. I stand up here because I wanted to support the interim plan that has been presented to you, because if Missoula County can make this showcase example of trying to reduce energy conservation in this county, in this state, it'll send a signal to the rest of the nation that in a large coal-producing and coal-exporting state like Montana, where we currently export 50% of the electricity that we generate in this state, 50% of it's exported, we haven't even begun to tap the coal resource that Wyoming has. I don't think we should, because that's the dirtiest fuel you can have. So while I endorse this, these goals and this recommendation, I'd also like to suggest that Missoula County increase its efforts to encourage conservation, and I think we have an opportunity to do a green bed tax in this county. The green bed tax could help supplement what Northwestern Energy and the Rural Electric Co-ops are trying to do to conserve energy consumption in the residential and commercial sectors of consumption, which are pretty big, 35%, 40% of the pie is that. The other thing I'd like to talk about in the three-phase thing is consolidate transportation efforts. I know we've been making some inroads with that. Big county, lots of things are going on. Cheap gas right now doesn't help, but having a plan in place to encourage better transportation protocols and making transportation systems available to encourage that as gas prices will go up would be an endeavor. The other thing is sequestering carbon. We've got a really good hybrid poplar tree farm out here, and if the county can, on their own property, encourage more tree planting, it's the lowest-cost, most effective way of sequestering carbon. And as a builder, taking wood that would be burned in our forests and using it for construction is the other easy way to sequester carbon that would have been burned. Also wanted to address the Bitcoin issue. I've had an opportunity to meet a number of electricians and electrical engineers that are working on the Bitcoin operation over in Butte. There's two of them in Butte now. Another one is being built in Hardin. They're proposing, talking to the Flathead Irrigation Project to propose one up on Kerr Dam. And I would just like to say that with all the conservation efforts that this region has made in the last 40 years is gone with the Bitcoin. It's just gone. When I was in Butte, Bitcoin had asked Northwestern Energy for 375 megawatts of power for one new Bitcoin facility. 375 megawatts of power for one facility. Northwestern Energy said they'd give them five. So I went and looked at the output of Yellow Tail Dam on the Bighorn River. It's a huge dam. 250 megawatts is all that dam can produce. So they're shopping. Bitcoin is shopping hard in this state for cheap electricity, cool air, so they don't have to air-condition these things, and if there's any way that this county can get a handle on stopping Bitcoin from consuming more than its fair share of energy for a tiny handful of jobs and the speculative ventures that they have to hide commerce from taxation and tracking it globally, I would encourage this county to figure out a way to stop it. this county to figure out a way to stop it. Thank you.
Thanks, which happens to be our next topic. But we'll stick with the public comment on the Climate Action Resolution. And Josh, did you have a comment?
You basically said, I was going to say, thanks to Steve for his comments and for his 40 years of work. And stay tuned. In a few moments, we're doing Bitcoin.
Hi, I'm Amy Solenberg with Climate Smart Missoula. And I submitted short written comments. And I really just echo Robin because I also was on the technical team that helped. And it's been an impressive job. Erica, and then Elliot, and now Diana and her team have really pulled together. And it is, you know, county government operations, but you pair that with city government operations and then the community at large, and we can make a difference. And so, I just thank you for all the great work that you guys are doing and for these solutions will work better as we all partner and learn from each other, pilot-test things, and move forward. So, it's great to have, hopefully, the county on board with this resolution.
Thank you. And thanks for all the work. I know you've spent a lot of time helping our staff and the county with our efforts, and Robin as well, for all the time you've put in. So, we very much appreciate the people who are helping us along in these efforts. Any further public comment on the Climate Action Resolution? All right. Seeing none, I will close that hearing.
Just a few comments. First off, to echo the thanks, yeah, thanks to everyone who participated in the technical team working on the greenhouse gas inventory. Your efforts really were foundational in getting us to where we are today. Thanks to Diana, especially as of late, working on this particular item that's before us today. This is a big deal. In my estimation, climate change really is one of, if not the, most pressing moral issues of our time. And we have an opportunity here today, as Missoula County, to step up, to show leadership, and to really demonstrate that we can be good stewards of the biosphere from Missoula County, Montana. So, I offer my enthusiastic support for this resolution before us and look forward to its implementation.
First, I'd just like to say thanks to all the people who worked on this, Amy and Robin and Steve Loken and Diana and Jenny, and all the people who did this. Thank you so much for making this happen. This resolution kind of comes in two parts. The first part commits us to doing the work. The second part establishes a committee to figure it out. The third part that's not in here, but will come later, is our will to actually get the work done, which will mean spending money, making sacrifices. And I wish us all the same dedication and enthusiasm and attention to detail in taking on that third part that all these folks took on in the first two. And I enthusiastically support this. And I'm looking forward, as my colleagues are, to rolling up our sleeves and getting busy on this. Thank you.
Can I just get a formal motion on this?
Absolutely. I would move that we, the Board of County Commissioners, adopt a Climate Action Resolution that establishes a goal of carbon neutrality for Missoula County government operations by 2035.
A second.
Further discussion? And that is to include the words economic and social well-being in the adopted resolution?
Yes, as amended.
Great. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
And thanks, Elliot, too. I forgot to mention your name.
And Erica, who was here, was the one that did that work. Yeah, so. Now, we'll move on to other business. There is no action requested for this item. But as you all know, we did bring up the issue of cryptocurrency mining in the past and voted at that point not to move forward with an emergency interim zoning resolution to address the issue. However, the issue remained a problem. And so, we directed staff to continue doing some research and come back and give us some thoughts and options of what they had come up with of how we can move forward on this issue. So, we will have Diana and Jenny give us a, I won't call it a staff report, an update or some, your research findings. There we go.
Thank you, Commissioners. Once again, for the record, Diana Manetta. And I'm here with my colleague Jenny Dixon, both from Community and Planning Services. Now, before we get into the discussion of options, we thought it would be helpful to start with some background information on the topic of cryptocurrency mining. Some of this will be familiar to those who were present at one or both of the discussions the Commission had of this topic last year. But because it is so complex and because a few months have passed since our last discussion, we thought that would be a helpful place to start. So, with your permission, we'll do that first, try to be fairly brief, and then get on to the discussion of options moving forward. So, to start out, as a reminder, what is a cryptocurrency mining operation? In a physical sense, it's one or more computers. A large cryptocurrency mining operation, like the picture on the right there, is thousands or tens of thousands of specialized computers that were built specifically for this purpose and run 24 hours a day. So, and what are they doing exactly? To answer that, I want to take just a step back to consider what a cryptocurrency is. A cryptocurrency is a digital currency that's maintained using something called a blockchain. A blockchain is a distributed ledger, ledger meaning a list of transactions, and distributed meaning it's not held by one central entity like a government or a bank, but by multiple people could be anywhere in the world who participate in maintaining this blockchain. Bitcoin was the first cryptocurrency and remains the largest, but there are many others as well. And I also want to point out, there isn't just one blockchain. There's more or less one blockchain for each cryptocurrency. They have their own ledger, their own list of transactions. So, where the mining comes into this is as follows. When I buy something, I go buy a piece of pizza using Bitcoin instead of using cash or my credit card, my transaction is grouped together with a bunch of other recent transactions into what's called a block. That block is sent out to all the participants who are involved in maintaining this blockchain. And those participants are also called miners, and you'll see why in a second. Those miners compete to solve a complex mathematical puzzle associated with that block of transactions. There's no trick to solving the puzzle. It's not really fancy math. It's just using lots and lots of computational capacity, kind of like random number generating is what's going on there. Now, whichever miner solves that puzzle first gets to add that new block of transactions to the blockchain and is rewarded with newly issued units of Bitcoin or whatever the cryptocurrency is. That's their motivation for being involved in this way. And that's also why it's called mining, because it's the way that new currency enters into circulation. In the early years of Bitcoin, mining was something that people did on their home computers. But over time, as the price of Bitcoin increased, mining got more lucrative and more competitive. And people figured out that it was more profitable if you bought lots and lots of computers, and even more so if you used specialized computers that were designed just specifically for this purpose. So, what we've seen, in a sense, is really the centralization of mining in these large operations. At our last public hearing in September, we talked a little bit about the distinction between blockchains and cryptocurrency mining. I'm not going to go into a lot of detail, but I do want to reiterate one point there. I already said what a blockchain is. It's that ledger, that distributed ledger. There's also a lot of interest in using blockchains for other purposes that aren't cryptocurrency. And so, you might have seen this in the news, the potential of blockchains for finance and insurance and other industries. And the important thing to note here is that not all blockchain applications involve the type of processing that occurs at cryptocurrency mining operations. In fact, not even all types of blockchains for cryptocurrency involve the type of processing that occurs at cryptocurrency mining operations. Again, this is kind of technical. I'm not going to go into more detail. There is more of that stuff online associated with our September hearing for people that are excited to delve into it further. Another question that comes up a lot has to do with whether there's a difference between a cryptocurrency mining operation and a more traditional data center like Facebook or Google or Apple or something. And there are some differences. And the reasons for the physical differences have to do with the different functions. So, a cryptocurrency mining operation is processing data. These computers are doing this complex mathematical calculation associated with these blocks. They're not storing any data. And that's what sets a cryptocurrency mining operation apart from a more traditional data center where storage is also happening. And when you're storing data, you require a higher level of security, reliability, and redundancy in your systems than you do if you're just processing data. And so, that's why cryptocurrency mining operations can often make use of a more lightweight building like a warehouse or a storage facility, also can often make use of the kind of open utility shelving you see in the picture there on the left versus the more enclosed cabinets you see in the picture on the right. That open shelving doesn't direct airflow as precisely. But that's okay because preserving the lifetime and the uptime of the equipment is a lower priority in a cryptocurrency mining operation than it would be in a traditional data center. So, what's the deal with cryptocurrency mining in Montana? This industry has shown a lot of interest in Montana over the past year and a half, two years, maybe. We're aware of at least three large facilities already operating in the state and a lot of interest from others as well. As of about a year ago now, in conversation with Northwestern Energy, they said that if all the firms that they had been hearing from that were expressing interest in locating in Montana were to come in, that would total up to 1,000 megawatts of new electrical load. And that's versus the load in their entire service territory in the state of Montana is about 1,600 megawatts. So, 1,600 now, potential up to 1,000 new. I don't think anybody expects all 1,000 of that new load to be developed. But even if a small fraction of it is, that's still a big and really almost unprecedented, I think, increase in load. Electrical load in the state typically increases very, very slowly over time and not in these big, big jumps. So, why is this industry interested in Montana? Main reason is low electricity prices. They can negotiate really low electricity prices, and that is the biggest operating cost for these facilities. Another reason is our cool climate. When you have a lot of computers running 24 hours a day to prevent them from overheating, you have to cool them down. And you don't have to spend as much money on cooling in a cool climate. So, that's another consideration. In addition to Montana, parts of the world, parts of the country and the world that have seen a lot of this activity, in some cases even more so, much more so than we have, include Eastern Washington State, parts of New York State, other countries, including China, the Republic of Georgia, Iceland, and Sweden, as some examples. Several other local governments and utilities in the U.S. and Canada have found cause to restrict cryptocurrency mining in some way due to its local impacts. I have, we've listed them here. Won't go into detail on those. But of course, as we all know, Missoula County has also been having these conversations. And I'm going to turn it over to Jenny to talk about that history.
Thank you. For the record, my name is Jenny Dixon, Community and Planning Services. And so, to pick up where Diana left off, to give a little bit of background of how Missoula has been addressing this concern and having conversation about it and the potential impacts, just want to take you back to June 2018, where there was a hearing on cryptocurrency mining. No action was taken. It was intended to be a hearing to gather input with the intention to continue the discussion throughout the summer and into the fall, which, in fact, did happen. We had a second public hearing in September 27, 2018. We presented some options to the Commissioners, one of which was to establish interim zoning to place a temporary moratorium on new and expanded cryptocurrency mining operations. The second option was to direct staff to investigate the development of regulations to target impacts of concern, such as noise, e-waste, and energy, that these types of industries, not just cryptocurrency mining, but any type of industry may generate, but particularly focused on cryptocurrency mining, as that industry does tend to, these tend to be pretty significant factors related to that type of industry. At that time, the Commission did direct staff. They chose option number two, to direct staff to investigate those impacts, which we have been doing since that time. And the rest of the presentation here this afternoon will explain some of those impacts that we've looked at and how we think they could be addressed. So, just a quick recap of the impacts that we looked at, and you've seen this before, in terms of noise and e-waste, obviously, the cryptocurrency mining industry uses machines, these ASIC machines, that generate quite a bit of noise, depending on a variety of factors and how they're situated and how they're cooled. Noise is an identified issue for public human health impacts as well as wildlife impacts. And then, the electronic waste has been also identified, raised as a concern, which relates to e-waste. This equipment has a fairly short lifespan. And the heavy metals associated with these machines, when they're disposed of, could create some human health impacts as well. The disposal of e-waste is not regulated in the state of Montana, whereas I believe most other states in the country do. So, there are DEQ-approved waste recycling firms which can be utilized in the state of Montana. However, it is not required at this point. I think, turn it over to Diana to talk more about energy.
Thanks, Jenny. So, just as a reminder, in terms of the energy issue, this graph is looking at a global scale in terms of overall energy consumption associated with Bitcoin specifically, not with all cryptocurrency mining, but Bitcoin mining. You know, the way that Bitcoin system is set up, energy consumption does tend to rise over time. That's partly because it's set up such that a new block is added to the blockchain about every 10 minutes to control the supply. They don't want new Bitcoin coming into the system more often than that, because remember, new Bitcoin enters the system when a new block is added to the blockchain. So, as you have more miners participating and more computational power involved in mining, those mathematical puzzles would be solved faster and faster and faster. And so, you'd have blocks added to the blockchain more and more frequently if those puzzles weren't made harder and harder, essentially requiring more computational power to solve in order to slow it down. So, that's just a reminder of some of the reasons why energy consumption tends to rise over time, more miners participating and more energy required to solve these mathematical puzzles. So, we have seen that energy use go up for a while. We saw it flatten out and actually drop quite a bit in December 2018. And that was when the price of Bitcoin dropped, because that's another consideration here is how profitable cryptocurrency mining is depends on the value of the cryptocurrency that you get in exchange for doing that mining. So, when the price of Bitcoin fell substantially, we saw mining activity fall as well as miners dropped out or scaled back their operations. But it has since leveled off. And according to this estimate, this is from Dig Economist, which is the best estimate we've seen of global Bitcoin energy consumption. Currently, the estimate is that Bitcoin mining uses about 50 terawatt-hours of electricity per year. That's still, though it's lower than it was a few months ago, it's still equivalent to a number of countries, about like the size of Singapore or Portugal, I think, are the most, the closest at this point, or to about 5 million U.S. households. Another way, again, to look at that energy question is how much energy does it take to process a single transaction in Bitcoin versus a transaction using your credit card? So, again, buy pizza in Bitcoin versus with your credit card. And here's the estimate of that. It takes quite a bit more energy to process one Bitcoin transaction compared to 100,000 Visa transactions. For context, that it's about 400, a little more than 400 kilowatt-hours of electricity estimated for one Bitcoin transaction. That's about as much as the average U.S. household uses in a couple of weeks. Here in Missoula County, we have the one large cryptocurrency mining operation currently. And we estimate that that operation uses about as much electricity as one-third of the households in the county. That operation has publicly stated their intention to triple in size in terms of their energy consumption, at which point they would use about as much electricity as all of the households in the county. So, to address the Commissioner's direction from the last meeting, one thing we did in our research was we looked into how other local governments around the country have regulated energy consumption. Again, energy being identified as one of the concerns and the direction being to look into options for regulating these impacts. Regulating energy consumption is not something real typical that Regulating energy consumption is not something real typical that local governments always do. And so we found a limited number of examples from other local governments who have done this. Also, we found a lot of variation in terms of what it is that they're doing, in terms of the sector addressed, meaning residential, commercial, industrial, or a single industry only, in terms of specifically what the requirements are for those sectors addressed, and also variation in terms of the implementation tool used like building codes, excuse me, zoning codes, et cetera. Now, what we found here is that none of these examples seem to be directly relevant to our situation. Some don't really target the concern that the county has identified in this conversation. For example, they address residential energy consumption only, which has not really been part of the conversation we've been having here about cryptocurrency mining. Others use tools that are less available to us, given state law and given our regulatory environment in Montana. So what we did is we drew from several of these, kind of picking and choosing elements to put together a couple of general options that we can consider and that, you know, we thought were worth discussing in terms of our next steps moving forward. So I'm going to, once again, turn it over to Jenny to talk about those options.
And so this is our last slide this afternoon, but it really, it summarizes where we're at with the commission right now, seeking some, wanting to have some discussion and seeking some guidance from the commission with some recommendations from our office based on the research that we've done and presented here to you today and over the past year. The first option, a direction that the commission could direct us to take would be to create zoning regulations that would specifically address the cryptocurrency mining operation, the industry itself, given impacts that we've identified associated with that industry. The, in thinking about how that might work, we've been, we've been looking at ways to create zoning regulations that would do this by creating a zone that would allow cryptocurrency mining operations in the county in certain locations that meet specified criteria and also mitigate those adverse impacts that we've identified. You can see a sub option, or a sub option of this option is there's permanent zoning and then there's interim zoning. And I can go, I can give some more information on that during the question answer period if you have questions about that. The second option that we looked at and can certainly happen instead of or concurrent or, or consecutive with the first option is to investigate regulations requiring large energy consumers to use renewable energy since that seems to be one of the highest adverse impacts that we've identified. And as of concern to the county, as evidenced in the last public hearing as well. So those avenues to pursue that option would be to look at a type of zoning that could regulate industries that use a great deal of energy. And doing so would take a lot of time and it's very complex. So the timing for option number one is much shorter than option number two, which is why we are recommending at this time that you pursue option number one. And that doesn't exclude the possibility of also pursuing option number two. Unless Diana has anything to add, I think we will conclude the presentation and be happy to have some discussion.
Thanks. And do we have questions before we? Do you, I was gonna, yeah, do we want to do public comment or do any of you have any actual, you know, technical or detailed questions that you would like asked right now? Okay. With that, we will take some public comment on the discussion about cryptocurrency mining in Missoula County. Is there any public comment?
Good afternoon. Thanks for this fulsome discussion. Mike McGowan, CEO of DCM Limited, and I am a proponent of the HyperBlock Bonner Mill. I am also very sensitive and I'm a proponent of mitigating climate change. I, I hope we can have a discussion where they're not mutually exclusive. I hope we can. We currently utilize data centers and those are true. They don't take up a tremendous amount of, they don't take nearly the amount of electricity that a mining operation would. By the way, I think the mining operation, and you guys have to, may have to correct me, but the operation is at 20 megawatts, correct? It's a long ways from 375. And, and, and they're working, by the way, I am not associated in any form or fashion with HyperBlock or the Bonner Mill. I am an independent software developer and we use blockchain for real world solutions. And as opposed to getting into a, I, I think I would like to encourage the commission to develop kind of a data center versus mining center scenario because we're using mining centers. As a matter of fact, data center, excuse me, data centers are increasing astronomically as the recent data center knowledge research reports said that we're going to increase our IP traffic by 3.3 zabytes by 2021. That's five times more data since 2005. So we're using more electricity in our data centers. We're utilizing that storage. So that would be very, very helpful. But I would like to also address just a couple of things of why mining or blockchain or this distributed ledger is really what it is. Why are we even using it? I mean, I heard a lot of comments that it's a couple of three or four guys around the curtain getting rich and everybody's using their electricity, but there's real reasons we use this. One of those reasons is for security. We have to find a better way to become more secure. This year, we're going to be around $4.5 trillion in cybersecurity. This gives us a way to really mitigate that. The second is that it does reduce a middleman. It does take out a lot of different intermediaries, which allows most of the, or a large portion of the world's population, the ability to commute and commerce. So that's certainly an aspect that we use it for. We use it as a store of value. Believe it or not, 50% of the world's population, China and India alone, have had currencies crisis since 2008. Many of those people do not trust their governments nor their financial institutions and they utilize a public ledger in order to store their wealth. I know that sounds crazy because we've, live in a very, very regulated and by and large, safe democracy and we have that luxury. Most of the world don't and that's why it continues to use it. And then finally, it's a, an opportunity for un-commerce places in the world to participate, to be able to reach the unbankable. So with that, I would just say, in addition to the fulsome discussion of being able to talk about this in the midst of climate change, it does provide high paying jobs. It does provide an infrastructure. And if you look at some of the references that you had up on the board there, what happens when companies or mining companies, which have really went out of, there's a lot of them that have been offballed because of the price of the currency goes under. There's an infrastructure there for a data center. So just would like to open up that discussion. I really appreciate the, the opportunity. You know, maturity is in, is, is living in the, in the midst of deference and so I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. And could you, Diana, or could you clarify? We would certainly work to make sure that we are decoupling cryptocurrency mining specifically from other uses of blockchain, such as banking and security. And those would not be included in the language and definitions that we would use.
Correct. What we're talking about is, is in option one there, regulations addressing cryptocurrency mining operations specifically.
Is there further public comment?
Didn't you already make yours?
Well, now I'm in the Bitcoin thing. That's a quick one. I appreciate his Bitcoin representatives discussion. I think I'd be wide open to understanding more about what's going on and why. But currently, our legislator from Missoula, Shane Morjo, has introduced, I think it's HB 62, it's a bill that reduces property taxes for Bitcoin. So before we even have this discussion, we've got legislators from Missoula County already proposing to reduce property taxes for Bitcoin facilities to encourage them to come here. So I think we all need to kind of be on the same page where that bill is at right now. I think it's HB 62, I'm not sure. He's Native American, good guy from Missoula here. But again, as I said, they're starting to tap into what's going on in the Salish Kootenay tribe as well in terms of their energy production potential from Kerr Dam. But I think a moratorium makes good sense. I also think a discussion about what's going on. He's exactly right. Data centers use a huge amount of energy. But I think very, very many of us are unclear about what's going on with some of the e-waste potential as well as the tax structure. The facility I was talking about in Butte, they have both Chinese computers and Russian computers. The Russian computers, they could get not, could not get them to work after two or three different trial periods, so they were all scrapped in the Butte landfill with e-waste and we don't have any controls over that. So the short-term life that Diane was talking about and where they go afterwards is another consideration for all of us to note as well. Thank you.
Thanks. Jenny?
Thank you. I want to clarify that of the options that we've presented to the commissioners and the one that we are recommending at this point, option number one, creating zoning regulations to address cryptocurrency mining operations and their impacts, at this point is not a moratorium. We are looking at bringing forward a proposal that would allow cryptocurrency mining operations in certain locations in the county under certain conditions that meet these, some specified criteria relative to those impacts that we've talked about today, noise, e-waste, energy consumption. And so just want to clarify because I think I heard a reference to moratorium, which was a discussion last year. So I can understand that confusion there, but.
Thank you. That's a very important distinction, I think, to make. So thank you. Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Jason Vaughn. I'm with HyperBlock. And I just came up to make a couple of points just after hearing some of the conversations and stuff. I also am obviously a proponent of cryptocurrency. And I'm also a proponent of reducing our carbon footprint in the world. Me and my wife are very active in that as it is. I'm biased, obviously, because I work for this company, but I came to this company because I believe in blockchain technology. I believe in Bitcoin as a long time worldwide currency. I keep hearing people say it's just for the benefits of a few, you know? They see us as a, just have a small employment pool, working a huge data center here in Missoula or mining center. And, but what we provide is security and transaction confirmations on the Bitcoin network, which is a worldwide network. It's not just Missoula. So it's not just for the benefit of a few. We're actually helping provide security for a worldwide network. It's not just a small network. This is, and, and a lot of people talk about all these other blockchains. Bitcoin was the first and it's been around for 10 years now and it's been completely successful. You know, Mike had talked about security being crucially important. You know, we talk about the differences between Visa and Bitcoin. Visa's obviously been around for quite a while, but look at the amount of money and computational power that is spent in systems preventing fraud within the credit card industry. You don't have those types of issues with Bitcoin. And again, Bitcoin's in its infancy stages, you know? You have to give it time to grow. And with everything, things become more efficient over time. You know, the mining equipment that comes out, they designed it more efficient. We're always looking at ways to be more efficient. You know, Josh, I know we talked about, you know, the possibility of solar panels. Unfortunately, that's a huge endeavor at our size. You know, we're talking panels that would cost us upwards of $80 million to do and take 100 acres of property to cover to do that. That's just not something we can do at this time. But even solar is becoming cheaper and cheaper and cheaper. So over time, everything in our world is becoming more efficient. We understand it's a higher energy usage industry, but again, we're providing worldwide security. It's not just in Bonner, Montana. It's not just for the few of us that have jobs that are making money. And, you know, as far as the growth, you know, like you talked about when the price of Bitcoin dropped, power usage dropped, that's because some of the miners stopped doing it because it's not profitable. So in a way, it actually self-maintains that way. The other thing too, which I know you haven't talked about, but every four years, the payout for blocks on the Bitcoin network get cut in half. That's an important aspect that people need to realize because next year, in fact, is the next, it's called the halving. The payout for Bitcoin will be cut in half. When that happens, energy usage is going to go down again because there's not going to be as much produced. That's part of the system. There's only 21 million Bitcoin that are ever going to be mined and we're already, over 17 million of those have already been mined. People don't understand, I just request that people like really dig in and start doing some research on Bitcoin because all you ever hear is the negative aspects of it, the energy usage, e-waste, which we have never thrown anything in a dump and, you know, I heard somebody saying somebody threw something in a landfill. So, okay, I get that. Take that up as you can't do that. But to limit somebody's energy usage, you're pointing it at cryptocurrency, you know? If you're concerned about energy consumption, cryptocurrency shouldn't be in the title of this. It should be industries that use large amounts of crypto, of, of energy. But we're getting the bad name, the bad rap, and that's just, that's part of what we've been through. Any new emerging technology usually goes through a bunch of negativity in the beginning. But I think if people really dig down into what it can become, it'd be very beneficial. One of the other things, you guys had a, talked about e-waste. You know, you had your pictures up there of a miner and then a picture of a guy standing on a pile of e-waste. He was standing on a pile of all sorts of electronics that weren't miners, you know? So again, if there's a problem with e-waste, let's take it up general. Dave, at the last hearing, you specifically said at the end, we need to use a broader brush to look at these five items. You know, like let's stop pinpointing cryptocurrency and let's look at everything as a whole. You know, e-waste for anybody who has electronic waste. I mean, we are an electronic society now. Some aspects of that I don't like. We only let our kids watch TV one day a week and I'm a huge tech guy, but there's tons of e-waste out there. So it's not only companies like ours that might have it, but we do recycle properly. We try to reuse. We try to reuse old parts and stuff that we can. So even when we built our facility, we used, used equipment. We recycled equipment. We used parts that, that's part of how we were able to build our company up, you know? Some of these places are spending millions of dollars per megawatt to build a facility. We built ours much cheaper, which is why we've been able to sustain these lower prices and stuff. So I just ask that people really do some research and not just look at the negative articles, look at the positive articles and try to dig more into the technology behind it. And, yeah.
Further public comment?
I will be really brief this time. Commissioners, my name is Jamie Bowditch. I'm an attorney with the Boone Carlberg Law Firm. I do represent HyperBlock. And I would say right now, at, at some level, I think it's difficult to stand here as really, I mean, I guess at some level I'm an opponent of doing anything, yes, because this is my client. But at some level, I think actually it's difficult to take a position. And I suspect that's not really what you're doing here is you're gathering information. I think the, you know, as with everything, the devil hears in the details as to what you intend to do. I mean, I would be probably a proponent, and I suspect my clients would be a proponent for making certain that you're not having cryptocurrency mining operations in parts of the county that are primarily residential and people are running outside of their backyard or in their basement or in their garage where, you know, there are significant concerns about the adequacy of the wiring and things like that. I fully understand that, but I, I do have to express some concern about the potential of focusing on the current operations out at the mill site, especially given how very, very careful they have been to make certain that they're citing themselves in a facility that was really designed for something like this with adequate protection from the safety concerns, making certain without any requirements to do so that they're not engaging in e-waste. and being very deliberate about making certain that their energy consumption is as limited as possible, but also coming from, I hesitate to use renewable resources, but it's certainly not coal-fired, or things that have a significant carbon footprint. I think probably, it's probably carbon neutral what they're, where they're getting their electricity from currently. So I look forward to kind of seeing, if you decide to pursue this, what they may be. I would, I guess I would leave you with saying that the response should be somewhat measured and careful, because I don't want you to be picking on a company that I think is a very responsible citizen of this community on the basis of what may be occurring in other communities, most of which are outside of this country. Thank you.
Thank you. I know somebody in the back had stood up before.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm Dale Mayhew with Northwestern Energy out of Butte. I'm a key account and economic development specialist with our company. I'll keep this just to a couple of quick remarks. HyperBlock LLC, as is the data mining facility in Butte, one of my accounts and customers that I deal with on a regular basis. As a result of that, I've developed a real respect for both of these companies that I think are trying to do the right thing. And the big thing that I guess I think about, I'm not trying to get into the regulation aspect, and not really as an opponent or a proponent at this point. But as a utility, we look at our customers on a one-on-one basis. And these customers, big or small, they come to us requesting power needs for their facility, and we attempt to accommodate that. And in respect of this, both of these crypto-mining data centers, and I'd like to use data center rather than crypto-mining, is the fact that they required additional power loads that our existing system did not necessarily be able to accommodate at that point in time. Those companies both wrote large checks to Northwestern Energy to upgrade our facilities so that we could serve them. And I think that speaks well of these companies. They've got a vested interest in this, a very big one. And what happens is the fact that should these companies, or one or either one of them disappear for whatever reason, the rest of our customers benefit from that robust infrastructure that has been developed basically on their dime. So it's a situation that they're very vested in this, and they want to do a good job. And the big thing is too, like I say, to cryptocurrency, I think is a lot like electricity itself. You can't see it, you can't touch it, and a lot of times people just don't understand what it is. I think that everyone here today has gotten a better idea of it, but it's like a lot of other technologies. It's new, it's different, a lot of questions. But I'd just like to see it given a fair chance. Thank you.
Thanks. Yeah, Dave has a question for you before you sit down.
Sir, yeah, if you could come back to the mic just for a second, a quick question. So in terms of those big checks that CryptoWOT and HyperBlock wrote to Northwestern Energy, in either case, did that get invested in new renewable energy projects?
Not specifically. Those were specific for the upgrades necessary to serve these customers. The other thing, I guess too, we talk about renewables. Right now, our utility with the hydro aspect, the wind, and a small amount of solar, we're almost 60% renewable resource right now that we serve you as customers.
Thank you.
Further public comment?
I'm Gary Mattson from Western Reserve, and I know I already commented some, but this is going to be very short. I think, given the importance that energy consumption has in our society today, that it would be realistic and appropriate for governments to allow things to happen that are obviously beneficial as measured by such things as the number of people employed or the obvious benefit of a particular service. And so I think some kind of a zoning, and I'm glad I don't have to figure it out, some kind of a zoning regulation that would accommodate large energy users when they employ lots of people or when they provide an essential service. And one of the struggles we have as ordinary people, at least I do, is understanding what these data centers do. And so, and then as Jason said, there's all kinds of misconceptions, I'm sure. But it should be obvious to somebody that does the research that this is a good thing. And if it is, then maybe it's worth the energy consumption. If it isn't, then it's not. So I think the challenge is to measure the benefits available from this energy-consuming facility and incorporate those into some kind of a zoning regulation. I think that would be fair. It's what the governments do for us. They protect us from environmental and social consequences that are unhealthy and undesirable. So, thank you.
Further public comment?
Joanne Wymer from Bonner. I would just maybe kind of like to ask, because you both sides have said about you're looking for a place to put it where you're not going to affect a lot. Well, there are some of us up there in Bonner, and we were here last time with the noise, in which you did a real good job. I mean, it's been pleasant. But that's my question. With the expansion and what's going to go on, is the noise going to come back? All I have.
Thank you. Is there further public comment? All right. No one else wants to comment? Oh, are you going to comment, Amy? I couldn't tell.
I couldn't either. I wasn't going to comment, but again, Amy Silberg with Climate Smart. And I just appreciate all the work that goes into figuring this out, because it's not easy to address how we deal with the fact, but, and as you guys know, thank you for thinking hard about how we understand what is one business that would potentially have more electricity than everybody else who lives here, and reconciling how we actually reduce our electricity use over time. Instead, tripling it doesn't, it's not going in the same direction that our growth policies wrote for the city and the county and a lot of these resolutions that we're putting forward. So I, my comment is only to, you know, continue to remember as we get into the details of data mining versus crypto-mining and things, that we ultimately have some goals that we're trying to do, given the climate issue that's ahead of us. So thank you to the work these guys are doing and your good brains around how we reconcile those challenges. But we're supposed to be going this way. That's all I'd like to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment on cryptocurrency mining? Okay. So is there a discussion by the commission, and we need to give staff some direction?
Yeah, I've got a question and then a couple of comments. So for either Jenny or Diana, could you talk just a little bit about the timeframe that you would anticipate for option one, permanent zoning? And I agree with one of the speakers that ideally at some point, this broader brush approach of tackling energy use by all energy users, but particularly large energy consumers is important, recognizing the cryptocurrency mining uses exponentially more energy than even some of what we might consider large energy users. But thoughts on timeframe?
Can I just add to that, because it ties in? If you were to address a timeline on permanent zoning, could you also speak towards a timeline on interim zoning?
Absolutely.
Thanks.
Yes. Is that on? With respect to a procedure to bring zoning before you for a public hearing, state law spells out the procedures and the notification requirements for interim zoning and permanent zoning, and they're significantly different. Interim zoning is intended to be a pretty quick moving forward because there's an emergency, and the commission has the authority and a lot of latitude in determining what you believe is an emergency and how to address it through interim zoning. That can happen as quickly as a week or two, depending on schedules and getting notifications in the newspaper. The permanent zoning is a much, significantly longer process, which requires 45 days length of posting than, that then takes you to the first public hearing of planning board, and then usually it's another three to four weeks before we get to the commissioners. So that would be along the lines of four, four to five months, probably.
Do you have any idea of the timeline it may take to accomplish number two?
We, I wouldn't want you to hold me to it, but in our discussion with other departments and kind of brainstorming how those large, requiring large energy consumers to use renewable energy was going to be anywhere from six to 12 to 18 months, and that's if we could even do it at all. And if you direct us to go in that direction, we'll continue to investigate it and report back whether we can even accomplish, and how we might be able to accomplish that.
And are those the MCA's you have open in Fernia?
Yes.
Could you read me the definition of what constitutes an emergency for interim zoning?
Well, so I can read it, read you what, it's not a definition, so it's a description. And I have a little bit of more information that I can add to it as well. It's as simple as the Board of County Commissioners may establish interim zoning to address an emergency that involves public health, safety, morals, or general welfare if, and then it goes on to spell out what you need to do if you decide to pursue the interim zoning route. And so looking at just kind of broad definition of what an emergency is, just Webster's definition, or, you know, any other kind of dictionary type of definition, is broadly described as an incident that has already caused loss of life, health detriment, property damage, or environmental damage, or an incident that has a high probability of escalating to cause immediate danger to life, health, property, or the environment. I mean, there are a multitude of definitions of emergency, and we talk about, emergencies are not always addressed rapidly and may not, and may take some time to address, particularly when the urgency is unknown, not well-understood, far-reaching, and complex. And we've indicated that climate change falls in that category.
So, yeah, I would, I would certainly support directing staff to work on number one for permanent zoning. And as part of that, I would be very interested in looking at ways in which, if you're looking for criteria by which a cryptocurrency mining operation could exist, take a look at how that facility, that company's construction of additional renewable energy might help fulfill that, because I think that's key, that we move towards a point where these, if we're going to allow it, they darn well, at the rate that they're using energy, better be using renewable energy, in fact, better be creating additional new renewable energy. And I would even go so far as to say, I would support us directing staff to revisit the interim zoning at our earliest convenience. And my rationale for that, and I know I was not supportive of that last year, but I think conditions and circumstances have changed, and my thoughts on the matter have changed. We adopted this climate action resolution today. We'll be adopting, hopefully, 100% clean electricity resolution next month. And it seems to, to me at least, to allow expanded or new cryptocurrency mining operations in Missoula County will go in the exact wrong trajectory and in fact, set us back in terms of achieving those goals. And I guess finally, I wonder if we've taken in the past too narrow a definition of what constitutes urgency or an emergency as it relates to public health, safety, and general welfare, because arguably, addressing climate change is a real and pressing and imminent emergency at a global scale, and we've got to step up and do what we can.
At the risk of just echoing what Commissioner Strohmeyer had to say, I want to add to that. I feel like the landscape around this issue has changed. We, in fact, just changed it 15 minutes ago. And as Commissioner Strohmeyer alluded to, next month, we're going to work with the city to adopt a resolution towards 100% clean energy. If we continue to head down the direction we're heading, neither of those two goals will be possible. As for the nature of an emergency, if we were to tell the million-plus climate refugees in the United States last year that they didn't have an emergency, they would beg to differ. If we were to say those same things to the folks who evacuated out of Sealy Lake because they couldn't breathe, they would say the same thing. I'm sensitive to the topics the proponents brought up. I do believe that we need to work on security and getting banking to the unbanked, currently unbanked right now, those are fantastic goals. I do not believe that cryptocurrency is the only way to do that, nor do I believe that we, the only way we do cryptocurrency is to do as it is done now. There are other methods. I also sensitive to what you said about this is a nascent technology, and I believe over the coming years, the crypto folks will figure it out, and they no longer will use the kind of energy they do right now. A third of the county's energy, of our residential energy, used in one factory that employs 19 people to do something of, right now is a dubious social good. I just can't see this continuing. So I would encourage you to pursue interim zoning as well, with an eye towards renewable energy to permit cryptocurrency.
And that's exactly what I just wanted to comment on. And this discussion over the last year has not been about any one business, and it doesn't, and as we go forward, it is not about any one business. But I do want to address that for a moment in the context of the direction of moving forward with either permanent or interim zoning. Our goal is to try to help the businesses that are here right now or want to come here to do cryptocurrency mining to be able to remain or to settle here as long as they address those impacts of concern. And we are working hard to find ways to do that. I don't know if they will be able to, or if they will be willing to, but we want to set them up to be able to, should they choose.
Thank you. And I agree with my comrades that I would, I'm willing to entertain the idea of looking again at interim zoning. I think the last time we had this discussion, I couldn't quite get to it being an emergency, you know, but I was 49% there, and now I'm 51% there, because we were really pigeonholing what that meant, or I was. It wasn't staff's fault, but I was pigeonholing in my mind what constitutes an emergency, and I was really thinking of public health and safety. And at that point, we were talking about fires caused by it and things like that. And I wasn't thinking about that morals is actually in the MCA about this, and what an issue that is, and then defining well-being as property and environmental damage, which, I mean, look at the flooding, look at the fires, that's property damage and the environmental damage that's caused by climate change overall. And when I really, I think, think more holistically about emergency situations, I'm there, I get there, and I agree now that this could be deemed an emergency. I also needed the additional research that you did, because I really liked the concept of let's regulate impacts, not an industry, but realizing that that may not even be doable. But I needed the time to do the research and figure out, like, there's really no tools out there for us currently, and maybe we can figure something out in 18 months, but it's going to be really hard, it's going to require more staff, how are we going to identify these industries? How, it's, you know, so if we think we have urgency around an issue, even though that may long-term be the way we want to go, that's not what's going to work for us right now, even though I do like number two, and I would like us to pursue it in the future. I think it's also been very helpful to take this time and do the research to really be able to decouple cryptocurrency mining from data centers, from blockchain technology, from legitimate positive economic development opportunities, because something we don't want to do, and what I was scared of doing last time, is throwing ice on economic development and saying, "Industries aren't going to want to come here because we're an unfriendly government who hates progress." You know, but I think that now I have the education provided to me that shows me, even though I was confused at first and was a little bit worried about deterring economic development, that's actually a very easy, clear line. that's actually a very easy, clear line. It's very differentiated for me now that cryptocurrency mining and overall economic development and bringing businesses here are, is very clear that those are two different things. So I feel like with the extra time we took, I appreciate it. I know staff and the public were frustrated, but I think the, the extra time we took really gives me comfort and I appreciate that, that we got here. And I think obviously we all have gotten here to now. I think we all agree that, that we would like you to, to look again at bringing forth some proposals for interim zoning. Is that agreed?
Yeah, and I would just add, I'm, I'm certainly not insensitive to industry concerns, and I think that's exactly why we're going to take a look at criteria to mitigate impacts and to maybe allow operations to exist in Missoula County. When is the earliest that we could have a public hearing on, on interim zoning?
Yes, thank you. I was actually wanting to address that. In anticipation of you possibly giving us that direction, we have looked at our calendars and can bring something to you for consideration as an interim zone, which you may take action on that day, on April 4th at your regular meeting. To do that, we would be putting, we would be exceeding the legal requirements in MCA for notification and can get a legal ad in the newspaper beginning Sunday, would run twice before the hearing on April 4th. And we have a contact list of a couple hundred people that we reached out to, not only for this discussion, but could also reach out to them individually through email, our email lists, listserv, again, to let them know about interim zoning, public hearing, and, you know, try to get as much notification out as possible. Also, having a website available where we can post any proposed language and just welcoming the public to be in touch, including HyperBlock representatives, if they have specific concerns that we might be able to discuss and, and figure out how it would end up working for them, we would be more than happy to do that.
Very excited to hear about all this and I'm thrilled at the direction we're going. I just wanted to say, I feel like in the long run, number two is where we need to go because of the nature of this industry, who knows what will happen next, and we really need to be thinking about large energy users. But I feel like what we're talking about doing today buys us time to take on number two. We need to stop digging this hole deeper as we try and figure out our way out of it.
And so, and to be clear, I, I think our direction is to explore interim zoning that establishes appropriate locations and criteria for when crypto, when and where cryptocurrency mining would be allowed, not a moratorium on cryptocurrency mining. All right. Is there any other comments from the Commission? Okay, does staff have clear direction and everything's, we're all good? Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you. Is there any other business to come before the Commission? We will adjourn. Thank you.